702M to order. Someone please stand for the pledge.
Uh, wait, I'm shooting now.
Oh.
Sorry. Maurice Knight is a sixth grade student at the Rain Avenue School. He loves to read. His favorite genre is science fiction. Maurice finds science interesting, and his future career goal is being a marine biologist. He is interested in ocean plants. You will either find Maurice with his head in a book or you will see him drawing anime characters in his spare time. Maurice, can you come meet us on the pledge?
At my allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maurice. Go on. Thank you, Maurice. Well done. So now we have Mr. Ruiz, who'd like to make some presentations. I believe our first one is the Poetry Madness. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Actually, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mrs. Will Gibbons, our English and Social Studies chairperson, who's going to provide a presentation on our March Poetry Madness.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to get to introduce all of you to our four winners for this year's Poetry Madness competition. As you may know, the Poetry Madness competition was started by Ginnie Seepers over a decade ago. Over that time, this competition has become a yearly tradition in East Rockaway, and it serves as a great way for our students to discover and express their voices as poets and young writers. The theme this year was healing. The past thirteen months have been a challenge to East Rockaway's students, and this theme allows students the outlet to express their thoughts, feelings, and emotions. Many of these poems discuss the stresses and realities of the pandemic and the challenges our students face learning to live in a new normal. Others offer optimism and hope, and they embrace the fact that things will get better. In a school year where getting to hear students' voices can sometimes pose a challenge, the Poetry Madness competition allows our students to make their voices heard loud and clear. This competition would not be possible without the hard work of the English department. Every student in the high school was invited to write a poem, and the English teachers wrote hundreds of poems, and they then narrowed them down to the top sixty-four. If you couldn't figure it out, Poetry Madness happened in March, like my beloved NCAA tournament. So from sixty-four, they get round down to thirty-two, sixteen, and then we get to our lead eight. And we have our lead eight in bringing guest judges. This year, we had three guest judges. Two were former English teachers in East Rockaway, and the last was Jiggy Kelly, class of 2019 alumni and also the winner of the 2018 competition. Lastly, I would like to thank Sarah Karone for organizing the virtual presentation this year. Our competition was a little bit different because we couldn't have students present in front of the entire school. It's my pleasure to announce the top four for the 2021 Poetry Madness bar of bottles. Fourth place, Danielle Petty. Third place, Gianna Mancusi. Second place, Maddie Pritchard. And first place, Sophia Verlatti. I think what would be best is to be happy, yellow, then Gianna, then Maddie, and then lastly, Sophia. Come on, Marie. Thank you.
"Ethan." Life has not left me unglored. It's taken its grabs and left me scarred. I've skated forward with the world to see the pink of my flesh and the wave that I breathe. I stare and peek at the marks that have left, unhealing or leaving the cluck in my trap. My muscles grew tight and my head hung low, stuck in the motion of marking every blow. Counting the figures in missing pieces, designated presentations to search beyond our reaches. But the parts of my body had been shipped away like a shattered sculpture thrown to break it and crack it. What lies beyond what I've come to know? If my path was unclear, where do I go? And there in front of me, I found a tiny piece, a jagged-edged fragment that fit right into crease where my hands had been weathered by life before. My journey into history is described evermore. And as I stretched my arms to the sky I had once loved, another piece fell into my lap from above. It fit into my hip like one hand in another, a reward for a life not lived under covers. The small joys I had long forgotten were renewed with passion freshly begun. Staring at the stars that earned me a piece, another from laughter with tension to release, the sun on my skin and the wrinkle of my clothes, the little triggers of my skin that have started to close. The pieces that fit had no resemblance, no similarity or appearance or semblance, yet I have love for the slivers that have began to creep, built in the broken cracks and maybe complete. I am not whole and I hope to never be, always a variety of life and memory. I will continue to down pieces to my growing soul and learn to love each fragment that I have found.
"Isolated." Fear of the weapons of solitude and isolation surrounded my every breath of breathing, a routine that I repeatedly despise seemed to be stuck behind me from being in the cement. No escaping reality with thoughts hanging around in my head if I were to play on that beat. Mom and dad screaming seemed to be on a loud screen with rejected echoes. I began to feel defeat. Eyes very important on the true screen as voices of confused events continuously chimed in and out. A few things fall off, the light falls out. I never thought I would miss me for a traffic light, a clean green, or being close enough to hear the breath of those that I love. Never thought I would miss the bus where I got its arrival or the blinding square pictures that I saw sitting in front of. I never thought I would miss the description of my awakening in my body, similarly, I must realize the mice around me in a scrape. But here I am, missing the two days ahead. I want to switch to this.
"A Mortal Mission." We walk this world with our strides in wind, raising our sectors to stop. We innovate and salivate and turn towards nap with no fear for what just has to dawn. The human race can't contain its pace, sprinting towards higher ground unknown. But we seem to be armed on pollution and tar like we live on this planet alone. Our forests are under, the ice caps are thawing, and sea levels seek to enlarge. Yet our leaders sit back with the battle unchallenged as they all will be seek to take control. We survive on plenty dreams and false promise, distracted with the woes of our lives. But if we persist on this plan of no action, current life will be one of our paths. We embrace it or are battered by history, by selfishness, thought, and neglect. Why, the only way we can heal something through bruise is by setting up plans for what's next. Pressure goes in power with their ideals in flowers, seen as policy at every call. For our future generations, we'll call praise for our causation if we have any earth but Louise not at all.
"The Complexity of the Cage." It is often been said that time heals all wounds. I do not agree. It is a fool's dream to ever believe it could, a false sense of reality. Finding a cure for clamoring beasts clawing from within is as asthma and asthma tumultuous seek with a land and guiding ship. There are states of being I often analyze the most complex being the cage, filled with lows and highs, a myriad of ambivalence and rage. The cage has not been very kind in all my years of living. Sometimes I wish my mind would die and free itself from prison. But finally, a day may come when the beasts go to sleep, the sea calms down to a silent hum, the cage is open wide, and I am free. But I spent so much time in my cage, I forgot that the outside wasn't all that. There was a certain comfort in being afraid compared to the open world, so large and so vast. At least trapped in my cage, I knew what to expect. I knew it was both healthy, but I survived nonetheless. For inside my cage, I jumped up realities. I crafted poems and paintings, had endless possibilities. We don't give enough credit to the cage, in my own personal opinion. Told to break free every day, but what if my cage is a strange kind of Eden? I don't want to push away the storm inside the cage. I want to feel it, touch it, and live it until I'm not afraid. There is something to be said about the life inside your mind. No one else will ever know what it's like. So process, cope, and heal on your own time.
All right, one, two, three. Okay. One more.
Congratulations once again to our students. Poetry is really, really outstanding, amazing. And also congratulations to our teachers. Thank you to Mrs. Verone, who led Poetry Madness this year, but also to all of our English teachers who get our students to the point to create these beautiful, emotional, powerful pieces. And real girl power up there, so, girl. And one gentleman as well. We were successful too. It's night, because we believe it's a ladies' night tonight. Thank you again. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Gibbons, for your leadership of this important initiative. It's just one of the wonderful East Rockaway traditions that continue to take place, and COVID did not deter. So again, we've been able to reinvent everything, including rock rivalry, which will be happening this Friday. And nothing will change that, so we're really proud. It is my pleasure tonight to move on with our program to recognize two of our administrators this evening. We will be recommending two of our outstanding administrators to Board of Education for tenure this evening. And I have the pleasure to speak on behalf of both of these individuals. Tenure is a very, very special passage in an administrator or teacher's life, and it's something that does not come easy. It's four years of a lot of observations, a lot of evaluations, assessments, conversations. And for administrators, it's a lot of hard work as well. It involves evaluating scholarship, leadership, service, and commitment and professionalism to our school district because here at East Rockaway, we deserve nothing less. So tonight, it is my pleasure to speak on behalf, first, of Mr. David Barth, our Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletic. So it's my pleasure to recommend Mr. David Barth for tenure as Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletic. Mr. Barth has effectively served in this role for the past four years. Prior to joining the East Rockaway School District, he served as Athletic Supervisor and Physical Education Teacher at Friends Academy. Mr. Barth's coaching experience included the sports of volleyball, basketball, and lacrosse. His drive, record-proven success, love of athletics and physical education, work ethic, and commitment to this field made him an excellent candidate for this position. Although Mr. Barth had some very, very large shoes to fill when he assumed the role in 2017, he has clearly demonstrated that he fit the bill for this demanding position and has done an outstanding job as our director for the past four years. Mr. Barth received his Bachelor of Science degree in Physical Education from SUNY Portland and a Master of Arts degree in Liberal Studies and an advanced degree in Coaching at SUNY Stonerock, as well as a Master of Science degree in Educational Leadership and Administration from the College of St. Louis. Mr. Barth has provided highly effective leadership for all areas of district supervision. His positive, candid, collaborative, and approachable attitude is an asset to the junior, senior high school and the district as a whole. He has continued to grow his departments in various ways and provide solid supervision and leadership for his teachers and coaches. His enthusiasm for all he does is palpable, and one can usually find Mr. Barth on the sidelines with his camera taking photos at all athletic events. He is an active member of the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association as well as several other professional organizations related to his profession. He was recently recognized as a Certified Athletic Administrator by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. He is one of an elite group of interscholastic athletic administrators nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. David continues to exemplify the values of a self-motivated professional who is continuously desirous of advancing his professional knowledge and skill. The East Rockaway School District is proud that he has obtained this prestigious certification. Throughout his tenure, Mr. Barth has been active on various district committees. He co-chaired the ERSD Prevention Task Force Committee, which plans various important opportunities for our parent community on substance use prevention and parenting. In addition, he served on the Health and Wellness and Mental Health Committees and the School Safety Teams. Mr. Barth is always willing and able to participate in committees and local community events. The department he supervises offers important opportunities to support student engagement and learning experiences related to these areas by incorporating innovative and relevant mental health and prevention lessons for our students. As director, David has effectively implemented various initiatives and programs and have positively impacted our students and school community. Mr. Barth developed student interest surveys for new athletic programs and implemented the Student-Athlete Leadership Program lead amount throughout all sport seasons. He has also collaborated with Cohen's Children's Medical Center to offer programs for student athletes and families and partnered with the East Rockaway Fire Department to conduct the Light Up the Night event to honor our student athletes and the class of 2020 last year. These activities represented valuable opportunities for our students and families and engaged our district with the greater community, both locally and beyond, which is one of the important strategic goals for our district. He also implemented our new Pixelot Live streaming system for all events taking place in the large gym and on our football field. This highly innovative system allows our families and community to view live games and certainly has been an asset during the pandemic when athletics resume. One of Mr. Barth's goals was to increase participation for students in at least one sport, and he was able to realize that goal last year. Mr. Barth continues to enhance family and student communication within his areas of responsibility. He has increased our social media presence and utilized these platforms to communicate with students and families as well as showcase the talent and accomplishments of our students. He has used tip-off lines to communicate important information to families and student athletes, and these events continue to be very well attended. He keeps our families and community well informed of the accomplishments of our athletes and teams as well as opportunities and critical information for students. I believe Mr. Barth's most exciting moment to date in his tenure has been his considerable involvement in the design of the high school's new athletic field. As one might imagine, the opportunity to build a new track field is an athletic director's dream, and I admire and appreciate Mr. Barth's significant input and commitment to this project from the inception of our facilities committee to the research he has done on field design to the help in selecting the finishing touches on the final design. I know he will be feeding year to year, hopefully without ask, in the fall when we have the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new athletic complex and we all afford anticipation to that day. Mr. Barth is an intelligent, hardworking, dedicated, skilled, and caring administrator. I have had the pleasure of working with David for the past four years, and it gives me tremendous pleasure to recommend him to the Board of Education for tenure as Director in the East Rockaway School District. It's hard to believe that was four years ago. Now on to really my other right hand or my left hand in our office in our cabinet is Ms. Mona Hecht. It is my true pleasure to recommend Ms. Mona Hecht for tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Hecht has effectively served in this role for the past four years. Prior to her current position, she served as the Director of Guidance in the East Rockaway School District for six years and previously served as Director of Guidance involved with Carl Place and Sation School Districts. Ms. Hecht began her career in education as a middle school English teacher in the Chapel of the Redeemer School and elementary school teacher in the Nassau Lutheran Schools. Her institutional knowledge, record-proven success, intelligence, work ethic, loyalty, and commitment to the district made her an excellent candidate to move into the role of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction four years ago. Ms. Hecht was a bachelor of arts degree in English from Barkwood College and a Master of Science degree in School Counseling from Long Island University C W Post and a professional diploma in Educational Administration and Supervision, also from Long Island University C W Post. Throughout her time in East Rockaway, Ms. Hecht has distinguished herself by her children-first philosophy of education and ensuring student success is always her top priority. Her strong knowledge, sound judgment, and expertise in the areas of curriculum and instruction are evident. She has an exemplary work ethic, is incredibly organized and goal-oriented, and is committed to all that she undertakes. Always ensuring that through current best practices and research-based instruction that the students of the East of East Rockaway receive the best education possible is always her top priority. She's worked hard to build trust and foster relationships with all staff, parents, fellow administrators, and the school community at large. Ms. Hecht works diligently to ensure supportive leadership to the development and implementation of new initiatives and to provide professional development for our faculty and administration. As Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Hecht has effectively implemented numerous initiatives and have positively impacted student achievement. Mona works closely with our administrative team to plan and implement various instructional models and programs, all of which are aligned to our five-year strategic plan that she has supported since its inception and was also served on the committee. Among her accomplishments on the implementation of new elementary math and reading programs and secondary math, social studies, and science resources, she spearheaded and supported through ongoing professional development the implementation of John Hattie's Visible Learning Strategies and Teacher Hiring, the Use of Learning Attention, and Success Criteria for Lesson Planning and Delivery in all classrooms district-wide. And now she's embarking on a new initiative, which is the implementation of a new literacy coach for our elementary school. Mona is an independent, self-directed individual who possesses excellent problem-solving and analytical skills, and I regularly depend on her advice and perspective when challenging issues and problems arise. As a strong instructional leader, Ms. Hecht provides effective supervision of various departments and programs in our district. She offers expert feedback and guidance to our faculty and supports teacher professional growth district-wide, planning and presenting workshops and information on evidence-based practices. She's one of the most task-oriented and highly productive individuals I know. I am continuously amazed at the efficiency with which she completes all that she does to do and in record time. Mona has served on and chaired numerous district committees, including but not limited to Professional Development, DASSA Strategic Planning, and our Engage Every Family Committee, just to name a few. She's played an important role in shaping the various initiatives while serving on these committees. She's provided strong leadership for our hiring processes, her new staff, and was actively involved with the selection of district and building level of administrators district-wide. And boy, do we have the best team ever, all seated here. This past year, Ms. Hecht provided strong leadership for the development of our Return to Learn Plan during the onset of the global pandemic. Her support and diligent leadership have been invaluable during this very challenging time, and I personally appreciate her partnership as we navigate these uncharted and often uncertain waters. Ms. Hecht's efforts in this area were impressive. She organized a well-thought-out process for our Learning Model Committee and worked closely with all stakeholders to create the sound and effective remote and hybrid learning plan for our school community. She has cultivated strong, positive working relationships with all support staff, faculty, parents, and community members. She's always available to engineer to address questions or concerns. She consistently follows up to address any and all issues brought to her attention and brings those issues to resolution. In addition, she's highly regarded by her administrative peers and maintains great working relationships with everyone in the school community. She maintains very high standards for all and has important for herself as well. This is evident in her actions and the many decisions she makes on a daily basis. Ms. Hecht can always be counted on to provide suggestions on a myriad of issues, and I frequently see that her opinion. She's a valuable member of our district leadership team. She's able to understand the complexity and ramifications of every decision that must be made, whether it is related to curriculum, instruction, staff, or students. A constant professional, Ms. Hecht is an administrator who is dedicated to her job and to ensuring the success of not only the area of curriculum and instruction but our district as well. Ms. Hecht is an intelligent, hardworking, dedicated, skilled, and caring administrator, and I have had the pleasure of working with her for the past eight years, and it gives me tremendous pleasure to recommend her to the Board of Education for tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction in the East Rockaway School District.
Um, congratulations for this evening. Congratulations, both of you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item number three. Public comments on agenda items for our home viewers tonight. Do we have anything that's come in?
Nothing.
Nothing electronically. And anybody in here? I don't have anything on front here, so I don't know if we got any public comments tonight. Moving on to minutes. March 16, 2021, regular meeting on the Board of Education. And also, March 26, 2021, special meeting on Board of Education. Are any questions by board members? We have a motion to approve both 4A and B.
So?
So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? So moved. Acknowledgement of monthly reports and correspondence. Received the monthly financial reports, 5A. All board members that received those, lift those over. Are there any questions on those financial reports? Okay. And secondly, on 5B, correspondence. And today, I was going through our site here for today. We had some correspondences, actually. One was just asking for... One was just asking for posting of some of the recordings in Board of Ed Minutes and also the Agenda Items. So everybody knows in the public that all of our recorded meetings are on the website. So they're always going to be found on the website. Once in a while, we might have something that's holding it up. But if there's any not there, please let us know. We'll make sure that they are there. Okay? And the second one came, I guess it was a little message put out by the Herald, and this is about pre-K seats, and they're asking how many seats have been allotted for pre-K. We have not, we've applied for a grant for the pre-credit program from the state. We have no information yet. I think that was a little premature, but the Herald, I don't know if they got information from you.
Yeah, I actually didn't receive that. So if you can forward that to me, I will, you know, we are working on that, and we don't really have complete information at this time.
Right, but there will be, and we certainly are working on it. So thank you again for that message.
We did receive about $140,000, and there is a per pupil amount. I believe it's still at about $5,400, approximately, per pupil. I have heard that that was changing, but we're not completely sure. But we will, we expect to get details shortly on that. We will report out at the next work session. And I will respond to the Herald.
Thank you for that. Agenda Item Number Now, Six, Recommendation of Superintendent Schools with Ruiz.
Thank you, Mr. Gilgis. Tonight, I recommend that the Board grant tenure to the following staff members for the effect date indicated and subject to satisfactory evaluation. Mona Heck, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, effective July 1st, 2021, and David Barnes, Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics, effective July 1st, 2021. We also recommending that the Board accept, with regret, the resignation of Donna Smith for the purpose of retiring from the Special Education Teacher position, effective June 30th, 2021, and that has lasted 32 years of dedicated service. And we will be recognizing our retirees appropriately and fully at our June Board of Education meeting. We will be sorry to lose Mrs. Smith. Also recommending that the Board rescind the personnel item 6J from the March 16, 2021 Agenda and Minutes. Recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Heather Valamos to the position of Part Time Speech and Language Teacher, effective April 13, 2021 through June 30, 2021. Recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Lauren Radburn to the position of Short-Term Substitute Elementary Teacher, to be effective May 13 through June 30, 2021. Also recommending the Board approve the appointment of Kirsten Anderson to the position of Temporary Teaching Assistant, to be effective May 17 through June 25, 2021. Recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Sarah Gugliano, I think that's correct, to the position of Short-Term Substitute Science Teacher, to be effective May 3 through June 30, 2021. And also recommending the Board approve the following proctor assignments, effective May 1 through June 25, 2021. And that is Randy Phil Commons, Virginia Severs, Elizabeth Stack, and Pauline Ziegare. And thank you to our two retirees for coming back to serve in this capacity. We appreciate their service. Also recommend that the Board approve the Spring Sports Coaching Schedule dated April 20, 2021, and approve the Revised Elementary Club Advisor Assignments dated April 20, 2021. Also recommending that the Board approve the request of Ann Marie Penny for a continuation of her leave of absence from her school psychologist position for personal medical reasons through the end of the 2021-22 Fall Semester. Recommending that the Board approve the request of Francesca Lagnees for a continuation of her childbearing leave of absence from her Special Education Teacher position through the end of the 2021-22 Fall Semester. And finally, recommend that the Board approve the following temporary assignments at the salary approved by the East Rockaway Board of Ed on the Non-Contractual Salary Schedule for Substitute Laborer, Norrie Anchee, Athletic Supervisor, Dory Johnson, Substitute Titus Clerk, Nicole Messiello, Athletic Supervisor, Jennifer Parth, Athletic Supervisor, and Joey Candido for being substitute teacher.
Are there any questions, board members? The board? We have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, N. So moved. So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
By Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Seven, A, approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway School District hereby abolishes two positions in the Teaching Assistant tenure area, effective June 30, 2021. The Superintendent is directed to notify the affected staff members of this action. Seven B, approve the following resolution. Proposition Number One, 2021-2022 School Budget for the East Rockaway Union Free School District, resolved that the proposed budget of $41,764,646 for the East Rockaway Union Free School District of the Town Hempstead, County of Nassau, State of New York, for the fiscal year 2021-2022 be adopted, and that the amount of the said budget be raised by the tax upon the taxable property of the school district after first deducting the monies available from state aid and other sources. Any questions on seven A or B on board members?
No.
May I have a motion to approve Agenda Items Seven A and B?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McNally.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Seven C, approve the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway USFD approves a real property tax report card prepared by the District's Business Office for the 2021 Annual District Meeting. And be further resolved that a copy of the said report card shall be submitted to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. Are there any questions on members of the board? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven C?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Di Matteo, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gilgis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven D, approve the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway USFD authorize and appoint the following individual to serve in the capacity of election poll workers in connection with the May 18, 2021 Annual School District Meeting and election at the salary set for the non-contractual salary schedule for the 2021 school year. One, Nancy Lambert, Chair Press. Two, Lorraine Keegan, Election Inspector. Seven E, approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Cooperative Educational Services Nassau County hereby, after Nassau Voces, has proposed and presented its proposed Administrative Operations Budget for the 2021-22 school year, July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nassau Voces propose Administrative Operations Budget for the 2021-22 school year in the amount of $23,234,809, be hereby is approved by the Board and authorize that the District Clerk to execute the ballot and clerk certificate and file saying with Nassau Voces. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven D and E?
No.
May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven D and E?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven F, approve the following resolution. Whereas filling of three vacancies on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services Nassau County will be determined by votes of competent school district boards of education to be conducted at regular or special meetings of such boards to be held on April 20, 21. And whereas the trustees or board of education of each component of schools by resolution may cast one vote for vacancies to be filled, provided that no more than one vote be cast by any candidate, or any candidate, excuse me, be hereby resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway Union Free School District hereby elects by a majority vote of its members three of the candidates listed below, now federal order, for such vacancy on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Susan Berger, Martin Kay, and Michael Winkin, and authorize that the District Clerk cast one ballot for each of the said individuals for their election to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven F? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven F?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
By Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Seven G, approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway Union Free School District approves the terms and conditions of the memorandum of agreement dated April 12, 2021 between the District and the East Rockaway Teacher AIDS Association regarding the terms and conditions of employment for the District's Teacher AIDS Unit, employees for the July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2023, and be it further resolved that the Superintendent Schools is authorized to execute the resulting agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven G? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Seven G?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Seven H, approve the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that the Board of Education of East Rockaway Union Free School District approves the Second Amendment to Employment Agreement dated April 20, 2021 between the Board and Mrs. Ruiz as Superintendent Schools, and be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education be authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven H? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven H?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Di Matteo, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gilgis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven I, approve the following employment agreements for the 2021-22 school year and authorize the Superintendent Schools to execute the agreements on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Jacqueline Sream, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations; Mona Heck, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; Vincent Healy, Director of Pupil Personnel Services; James Daley, Director of Facilities; Mary Bolino, Secretary of the Superintendent Schools; and Bettina Faz, Secretary Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven I? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven I? So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven J, approve the agreement with Textbook Central for Division of Tel Logic, DBA, Central Ed with East Rockaway USFD for textbook information and management services for the 2021-22 school year, and authorize Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven J? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven J?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
By Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Seven K, approve the location rental agreement with Debbie Regan, LTD, and the East Rockaway USFD for use of premises of the East Rockaway Union Senior High School Building for the period of April 23 through April 25, 2021, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven K? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven K?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. McNally, second.
Second.
By Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven M, approve This one's out, because I'm rushing too quick. 90 seconds, basically. Seven L, approve the memorandum of agreement between the East Rockaway USFD and Rolling River, dating, and camp, for its fields located on premises by the physical education class of the East Rockaway Union Senior High School for the remainder of the 2021-22, 2020 and 21 school year, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Are there any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven L? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven L?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Seven M, approve the Abbott College Trading Assistant Products and Services Agreement, which consists of the 2021-22 quote-unquote for the East Rockaway School District for the period of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Any questions on Seven M? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven M?
Second.
So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, second.
Second.
By Mrs. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Seven N, declare optee for the purpose of disposal and more recycling the following. For disposal, the item listed on the change of disposition, deposition form, disposition, excuse me, form, dated April 14, 2021. Two, item listed on two textbook removal forms dated March 23, 2021. Item listed on three, item listed on three textbook removal forms dated March 24, 2021. Four, item listed on the textbook removal form dated April 6, 2021. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven N? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven N?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Seven O, accept the following donations to fund scholarships. From Aline Hummel, a check with a sum of $500,000 for Christopher Scott Hummel Memorial Scholarship. From Patricia Druigan, a check with a sum of $150,000 for the Sherwood Druigan Award. Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven O? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven O?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Seven P, approve the following donations. For the Center Avenue PTA, a check with a sum of $65,000 for the High School Music Department's musical accounting. Two, from the East Rockaway School District to the Roosevelt School District Football Program, a five-man Fisher football sled. May I have a motion to, any questions on Seven P? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven P?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Agenda Item Number Eight. I'm sorry, Eight, yeah, Eight, we're moving on to Eight. Seven's so long, it's like, what's another one? Agenda Item Number Eight, approve of CSD and CPSD recommendations. Will we see those during the week from board? Are there any questions? Again, may I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, second.
Second.
By Mrs. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Budget transfers, Agenda Item Nine A, on the recommendation of Superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following budget transfers. Number one, transaction number 21, there's 0014. Number two, transaction number 21, 0015. Are there any questions, board? May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Nine, A, One and Two?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gilgis, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So moved. Like turn Agenda Item Number Ten. I turn Agenda Item Number Ten over to Mrs. O'Hagan.
Okay, so I will be delivering the Policy Subcommittee Report. The Policy Subcommittee met on April 12, and there are two policies up for adoption this evening. First policy up for adoption is Euro One, Euro One, Gender Neutral Single Upcute Bathrooms. This policy addresses Chapter 353 of the Laws of 2020, which requires a school district and gosie courts to develop policies and procedures requiring that all single upcute bathrooms in schools and gosies be designated as gender controlled, with appropriate signage on or near the end of the door. Second policy up for adoption this evening is fifty-one, fifty-one, Homeless Children. This policy has been updated to reflect language that clarifies the participation of homeless students in junior school programs. Kinney Venda requires that districts ensure homeless children eligible for Kinney Venda services do not face barriers accessing academic and extracurricular activities, including summer school. Regulations have also been updated. We will continue to review the following policies. Zero One, Zero Five, Equity and Security and the Resurrection Education. Ninety One Fifty, Non-Racination New. Fifty Seven Oh Five, Federal Funds Purchasing. And Eighty One Thirty, School Safety Plan and Teenage. The date for our meeting is April 24.
Any questions by the Board? They have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Ten, Policy Reports. So moved. So moved by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? So moved. Eleven reports. Communication Subcommittee Report. So we met with the Subcommittee, which I chair, and, um, the meeting really was about everything that's being done around the community and around COVID, and it was such an agreement that the committee at this time would then not meet unless called upon the remainder of school year. Because of the amount of meetings that we've had with the public, using virtual meetings, I really feel that one of the major components of this committee was that, again, be very transparent with the community of everything that's going on. And it was a feeling that there can be no more transparency other than what's been going on because everything's been out there in all the meetings that were attended, all the parents, the administrative meetings that were going on. It was a great feeling that night by the members of the committee because they truly felt that East Rockaway Schools, under the leadership of Superintendent Ruiz, has done an outstanding job keeping the community informed and looking out to the best interest of our students and our parents, and even our plan of return was well done with that. So at this point in time, the committee will not meet until next September again. Thank you. Mrs. Ruiz, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. I'd just like to say a word, thank our administrators for their support today and their swift actions. As many of you know, we've had police activity in the area, terrible unfortunate situation that occurred close by, and although our district was really not in any danger at any time, our, through our relationship with the Nassau County Police Department, we were kept very, very well informed by the Office of Homeland Security. We have our liaison, Officer Greg O'Neil, who's in contact with us regularly and was right on my cellphone letting us know what was going on, as well as for precinct, and we did go into a lockout, but did allow a modified lockout so that all students who were out at lunch could come back into the building as well as faculty. And again, we were no danger at any time. Luckily, the perpetrator was apprehended before the end of the day, but it was so close to the end of the day, we did cancel after-school activities because we wanted to be sure and give some notice to families, and, you know, we weren't able to have a regularly scheduled dismissal. So we do thank the police. I have to say, over the last couple of years, the communication between the Police Department and Nassau County has so improved, and we really feel that they are supportive and are great partners of ours in keeping our school community safe. So thank you to our principals and our affiliate administrators for their swift actions. So in the area of achievement, our fifth grade students are engaged in informational writing. They're researching the famous women for their topic, creating text features appropriate for the genre and using thinking maps to organize their research. On April 11th, four East Rockaway High School students were participants in this year's NISM All-State Virtual Concert. Gabriela Matarri, Sophia Bertolati, Gracie Finale, congratulations to the Finale family. Shout out, and Emma Pollock were members of the treble chorus or mixed chorus. Concert made me leave by clicking on the link at the New York State School Music Association's website, which was really meaningful in the shame. Again, these experiences can happen live, but people have really adapted to continue to provide students with these wonderful opportunities. On Thursday, April 15th, students in the Science Research Program participated in the final phase of the Northwell Spark Challenge Virtual Field Trip. East Rockaway Science Research students submitted a poster focusing on neuroscience after being welcomed by Northwell staff. Students voted on submitted projects, participated in the virtual Norwell Health Career Expo, and finally viewed the award celebration, and our team, I forgot to say, won the rookie award at $500 for a science research program. So kudos to our students and our faculty advisors. Congratulations to our varsity boys soccer team and our girls varsity volleyball team. They qualified for their respective playoffs, and this is the first time that the boys have made the playoffs, and yesterday they won. They will play Car Place tomorrow in Class B semifinals, so good luck to our team and our coach. And our girls will be playing Monday, a home game here for the Class C County Championship. And Mr. Barba is exploring opportunities for spectators so that we hopefully can have some cheering section for our student athletes in this important game. We wish everyone good luck. Senior Danielle Viniti was selected as the National Medalist in this year's Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Danielle's art was entered in the Drawing and Illustration category. East Rockaway School District also has been honored with, again, with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association, sorry, but I'm not remembering what it stands for, NAMM Foundation for its Outstanding Commitment to Music Education for the sixth straight year in a row. Now in its 22nd year, the Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. We're so proud of our music program, as well as our art program, and all the honors and recognition that they have received. Junior Leslie Bedera was selected to showcase her artwork in this year's Long Island's Best Exhibit. This is a very prestigious art competition at the Hexer Museum of Art in Huntington, and you can visit the museum and see her artwork from April 17 through May 23rd, and it's well worth seeing. We're so proud. I think this is a couple of consecutive years now that we've had students represented there, and it's really a big deal for our students. So thank you to our art teachers, and congratulations to Leslie. Five East Rockaway High School art students won this, won awards in this year's Photographic Foundation Global Talent Competition. Junior Haley Arnold was awarded second and third place awards in the architecture category. Junior Isabella Anderson was awarded first place in the color choice category, and Senior Allison Rivera was awarded first place in the photojournalism category. Junior Gianna Menhucy was awarded first place in the skates, and second place in portrait categories. And Zara Supisada was awarded second place in the skates category. All five students will now move on to the youth showcase photography exhibit, a national competition which is hosted by the Photographic Society of New York City. Congratulations to all of our students, artists, as well as our teachers, for the guidance and leadership and expertise they provide. In the area of opportunity, Center and Rain students also participated in NISM and received many honors. Eight orchestra students participated, four received outstanding scores, and four received perfect scores. Twenty-three students participated in voice, six received an excellent rating, seventeen received a score of outstanding, and five of those, seventeen received an perfect score. Fifteen band students participated, ten of those received outstanding ratings, and five received excellent. We're really proud of our students and the leadership of our music teachers, Evan Anastasios and Jessica Salloway and Nicole Mahalik. Again, our programs have continued, our students have continued to excel and achieve, and we thank our teachers for being able to adapt our programs to give our kids these opportunities. The Return to Full Live Instruction, as you know, began last Monday, April 12, and our elementary and high schools welcome back fourth graders and seniors and students in grades seven and eight. This past Monday, we welcomed back grades five and six and, um, eleven on Monday. Our cheerleaders were outside the middle school waiting to greet our returning seventh and eighth graders, and balloon archers welcomed back our seniors. Our elementary schools had similar welcome. Activities are occurring in each core content area class throughout the week to help our middle school students acclimate to their full return. Each day, they experience a different presentation or activity that was designed to build community and enhance achievement and guidance presented on future goals. The administration clarified expectations and procedures, and classroom teachers engage learners in activities designed to foster collaboration. So there was an adjustment for kids coming back to the larger group, and thank you to all of our teachers and administrators for providing those opportunities for kids to react to full-time school. School counselors continue to meet with juniors to identify post-secondary goals and create plans to prepare for senior year. Additionally, counselors continue to support seniors as they make decisions about post-secondary choices, including connecting them to trade school programs and supporting with the application and scholarship programs. Seniors in participation in government, economics, and AP government participated in a voter registration drive during the week of April 19, and all students will register to vote in local, state, national elections, and hopefully encourage them to vote in our budget trust the election that's coming up on May 18. In the area of innovation, teachers participated in model schools professional learning. Focus was on creating Bitmoji classrooms, an interactive technology tool that allows students to independently use of writing of teacher-created resources to support their learning. And on Tuesday, March 23rd, science teachers participated in a virtual Zoom PD workshop on discovery tech book. Teachers continue to expand their knowledge of this interactive platform and educational resource with a focus on how to use this tool to develop targeted lessons using the plethora of resources that are available. Students in Mrs. Denone's Italian class are experiencing language immersion using Rosetta Stone. They were provided with individual user accounts and headsets to advance acquisition of the target language. And in the area of connection, as we said before, Center and Rain welcomed K four full remote learners as well as fourth grade hybrid students this week. Last week, actually, our respective PTAs provided blue displays and celebrated the return of our students. Last week, 12th graders and their families were invited to pick up class of 2021 lawn stuff, lawn signs, and we kicked off the celebration for the class of 2021. Additionally, the April East Rockaway High School PTA meeting, senior families were invited to hear about activity schedule for 2021 throughout months of May and June. The Skills and Achievement Class at the high school and the Senior Honor Society teamed up to light it up blue for Autism Awareness Acceptance Month. Students and staff wore blue on Friday, April 9, and the Honor Society sold bracelets and stickers and will donate $325 to Autism Speaks. It's great collaboration. Thank you to both of those groups. The high school beautification process, hopefully you've noticed, outside in the circle, in the traffic circle, as well as inside, is underway. We've installed the Rock Avenue banners around the front oval, logo signs throughout the building, advisory kindness memes tiled in hallways. The Rock decals have been placed on the staircase, right? Please take a look at those, they look fabulous. And we've installed new TV screens outside the auditorium for a nice spotlight scroll, and to provide the middle school students with access to daily announcements while in the hallway. The art club will begin work on hallway murals in the coming weeks, and I really do want to give a shout out to Mr. Shaefer, this has been all of his, and it's great to see all of these new things coming to fruition. The building looks beautiful, and it should be a place where kids feel wonderful coming to school every day, and makes you feel happy and has a lot of meaning to behind all of the signage, so thank you. School counselors presented in grades seven through 11 to get feedback on individuals' student progress as well as career aspirations. And additionally, in accordance with New York State mandates, individual progress reports will review the class and complete it. And to prepare for the elementary junior high transition, counselors are facilitating classroom discussions on changes and reviewing articulation with teachers. Articulation is also being reviewed to transition the seventh graders to eighth grade. These collaborative conversations include building support staff, administration, grade team, and counseling department. And then concludes my report? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have, I want to ask Mrs. Heck to update the Board on our return to full-person learning, and then Mrs. Sream is going to talk a little bit about the budget in anticipation of our budget presentation next.
Thank you. Much of the information about the return over last week and this week and anticipating next week has already been shared through the superintendent's report, but as was stated, this is a very smooth transition so far. The special thank you goes to, of course, the custodians and Mrs. Daly for ensuring the professors who set up to welcome those students back in a safe and healthy environment, and we're looking forward to having everybody in, with the exception of our fully remote learners, identified as locked. So looking forward, we do have about 11, sort of 11% of our students who are remaining on the fully remote lot. We've had a little bit of transition from students who were fully remote to returning, and those who have been on a hybrid to going fully remote for the most part. Our numbers are pretty stable, we are at 111%. We will also be revising our return to learn plan. That plan has been posted on our website since the very beginning of the school year, and we have received guidance from New York State, updated guidance from New York State on all of the factors that we must consider as we continue to move forward, and we've of course done that and shared this information with families, but that plan will be revised and it will be posted within the very near future, so we will share that out for anybody to review all that we've shared in our presentations and in these meetings as well. But again, the teachers have really provided those welcoming activities back for students, and the transition is very, very positive. We thank the PTAs for their support, for the balloon signs, all of the very positive welcoming that we're able to share as we welcome students to, as opposed to normal as possible.
So just to add to what Mrs. Heck said, there were some changes in the New York State guidance, and however, we had made changes in our return to full-person instruction prior to that change, but we do need to update the plan based on any changes that are made, and we will do that. We already have had parent forums, and we've actually not made any other changes based on the guidance, so that we are looking into CDC, as well as New York State, as recommended that barriers, although still allowed, may not be the best approach to mitigating the virus, and they are recommending enhanced ventilation strategies, which we are looking into with our architect and Mr. Daly, to see if there's a possibility for portable air filtration devices, and we are, we're going to be doing work on our system over the summer to upgrade our facilities, but in the meantime, we're hoping keeping windows and doors open that will allow greater circulation of air for, as the nice weather, as we keep forward with the nice weather, and we have more students in our country, so. Mrs. Sream?
Good evening, everyone. A four-part, nice budget work session was held on Tuesday, April 13. Discussions included our final budget proposal, addition initiatives for the 21-22 school year, the three-point budget, and a review of the revenue. The proposed budget has a 1.33% budget-to-budget increase and a tax levy increase of 1.6%, which is 1% lower than the tax levy cap. The very proud budget that we put together this year is it not only includes all of our current program, it also includes new initiatives while staying well under the tax levy cap, so it's something to be heard very proud of. All of the budget presentations are posted on the district's website. I encourage you all to please go and review them. We will have a budget presentation and a budget hearing on Tuesday, May 11, at 7:00 PM here. We encourage you to attend either Zoom or in person, where we will surprise the entire budget. Um, we encourage you to attend, be either Zoom or in person, um, where we will summarize the entire budget. Hopefully, uh, answer any questions you might have.
I just want to thank, um, Mrs. Rio for really preparing once again a very physically sound and responsible budget. I think being one full percentage point under the tax levy cap is remarkable. Um, we did receive some additional state aid, but that certainly didn't account for the entire reduction. And, uh, the board did, uh, ask us to come in under the cap, being sensitive to the current, um, climate due to COVID and our understanding how our community was impacted, and we're really very proud. And I completely thank Mrs. Rio for her hard work in maintaining all of our programs, all of our staffing, um, and staying one full percentage point under the cap. So, um, thank you, Mrs. Rio, and thank you to the board for their support of our budgets.
Great job, thank you. Awesome, outstanding, you're a great reporter.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to our reports from our superintendent, um, Mr. Ruiz, also Mrs. Heck, and also Mrs. Rio. Agenda item number twelve, Good Welfare. Congratulations to Alyssa Stegner and family on the arrival of her son, Richard Vincenzo, on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Condolences to Caitlin Torino and family on the passing of her grandmother, Jean Judeece. And condolences to Chrissy McRance and family on the passing of her father, Samuel Conan. Public comments, do we have any public comments of the, of the question? Okay, any other public comments from the audience? All right, board member comments, who would like to begin tonight?
I'd like a little something about the budget, and we do start with that, if you don't mind. Um, last year, we ran, board, one of our goals was to do more than less, and this year's budget just, just that. We are one full percentage point below the tax levy cap, as we stated. We have no cuts in programs for our students, and this is all viewed without using a dime from ZERX's original gaps. So just as a taxpayer, a board member, Jackie, really great job. I appreciate what you've done. Uh, secondly, just congratulations to Miss Heck and, um, Mr. Bartha on your tenure, well deserved, and great job to all the poetry men and his competitors. Thank you.
Should I go next?
Yeah.
So you said almost everything that I was going to say, and it's a little more relevant with the number, so I'm just going to leave you guys with your vote. Never look down on anybody unless you're helping them out, that's a quote by Jesse Jackson.
Jackie, I want to thank you again, um, you know, we see every month, how many times a month, all the hard work you do and how you pay off this budget. I don't think anybody would have predicted that you would get one full percentage point under the tax cap, but that's just incredible, great job. And, um, I want to echo these guys, Mr. Bartha, Mrs. Heck, congratulations on your very well-deserved tenure. And I'd like to congratulate Sophia, Maddie, Gabby, and Daniela. Um, I wish I could write right there, awesome job.
Um, so I would like to begin by quick congratulating the winners of the poetry man and competition. Every year, I am in awe of the creativity and talent that are inspired by this event. Next, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Heck and Mr. Bartha on their well-deserved tenure recognition. It is my hope that you will both continue to move the district forward academically and athletically in the years to come. Additionally, congratulations to Mrs. Donna Smith on her retirement, your years of service and dedication to the students, whether in the classroom, during musical rehearsals, or meeting your book deadline. You faced each challenge with a smile on your face and readiness to dig in. You inspire young learners to reach for the star. Thank you for all you have done and enjoy the many adventures that await. Lastly, thank you, Mrs. Rio, for all of the work you have put into the budget. Your attention to staying under the tax cap while not only maintaining programming but offering more opportunities for the children and the sisters is a remarkable feat. You are an asset to our community, and I'm sure I can speak up against the entire board as everybody for a time. Um, when I say we truly appreciate you and all that you do, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan. And, you know, when I continually always hear the accolades that go around the district are students, you know, tonight, poetry, art, athletics. It's, it's about the well-rounded student, and one of the things that East Rockaway does so well, because nobody gets left behind, is the ability to have well-rounded students, socially, emotionally, intellectually. We combine all those attributes, you know? When you only have limited resources and students, you need to get the best out of your resources, right? And in order for us to continually shine around the county in many of these areas and outside the county, the state, you know, state NISMAllstate, right? And all the other, uh, art events that would take place with you. It's all about really the nurturing process that takes place. So administrators, thank you, because that doesn't happen without you. And your leadership to the teachers who bring the best out of our students in the classroom every day and to our central office also, all you do is carve that pathway for the ministry. It's, it's a team effort, you know, a whole team effort, and I thank you everybody for that. Mr. Shaffer, I can't thank you enough about all the scientists around the building. To me, it inspires me, uh, when I look in the hallway, because to me, signage means traditions. It brings out what, what students take pride in when they look around the building. And, and I'm sure Mr. Bartha must be helping you out a little bit with that, because a lot of it seems to be some of the logos that come from that area, so it's a great teamwork that you're doing there. Um, tenure, tenure's a great celebration. Mr. Bartha, Mrs. Heck, you know, celebrate tonight because you well-deserve it, all the efforts and the hard work that you put in to our district here, servicing our district. Well deserved, and we hope to have you for many years to come, so thank you for that. Your retirement, I got an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Smith this past week, and, you know, being a former colleague of hers, and it was, it was a great conversation. You know, it was promotions, there was laughter, um, celebration about a career that's so well-lived. Um, she taught my, my, my children, and I can tell you, they tell me stories of how hard Mrs. Smith was in class all the time, but always hard for the good reason, because she wanted to see them do so well. So thank you for all your dedication and years to East Rockaway and what you've done there. Um, the last thing I want to thank is my, uh, fellow colleagues up here of the Board of Education for supporting me in my second term of run. For the Board of Education, thank you very much. And I think we have that, anybody else? Okay, so it is now at eight twenty, we'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. So moved by Mr. O'Hagan, second. McNally, Mr. O'Hagan, that's, that's not good. Just McNally, second. No, it's actually not late tonight, that's, that's only twenty. Yeah, that's really true. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
And I noticed nobody opposed, so so moved. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.